...of the October the 14th, 2014 Board of Supervisors meeting to order. I want to note that we have a quorum. We have the night Mr. Jeff Black from the Providence Reformed Presbyterian Church to do our invocation. Like everybody to stand, Mr. Black will come forward. And please remain standing for the pledge allegiance.
Great and holy God, we come into your presence with thanksgiving and with praise. Acknowledge that you are the eternal God who without beginning, without end, utterly self-contained, self-determining, that you merely spoke, and all that came into existence did come into existence. You sustain it and you govern it according to your good pleasure. You have existed from all of eternity in three persons, yet one God, Father, Son, and Holy Ghost. You grant to us many gifts, including godly civil government, that you populate it with godly civil magistrates if we seek your law, and you give us men that will rule according to their own ways if we reject your law. Great and holy God, we pray that you would bless this meeting, this county, that you would raise up men who fear God and who rule knowing that they are to do justices you have defined. They are not arbitrary. Liber us from the rule of men and grant to us the rule of law. In Christ's name we do pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to welcome everyone tonight. It's nice to see a good crowd here tonight. We're always welcoming all the citizens to come to our board meetings and participate in the county government procedures. The first item on the agenda tonight is the public hearing on surplus real property. The Wiss County Board of Supervisors will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, October the 14th, 2014, at 7:05 PM to hear public comments on declaring following county property surplus. Speedwell Horton Field, Old Speedwell Fire Department, vacant lot on Route 11, lot on Granite Road, 151 Carver Drive, Main, Ivanhoe Industrial Park property, and 2110 North Fourth Street, Whiffle. Tonight, we'll have Mr. Hall will call the names to come up to speak. You have three minutes, individuals, five minutes if you're speaking for a group. And we'll now open the floor for the public hearing.
All right, we've got six citizens that have signed up to speak, and I think going first is Stephanie Whitler.
Thank you all. I appreciate the opportunity to tell you all a little bit about Speedwell Fire Department and why we really are supporting and hoping that you'll listen to what we have to say tonight. I'm a second-generation firefighter with over 28 years of experience with fire and rescue, now serving as the treasurer of the fire department. I'm standing before you all today to ask that the proceeds from the sale of the original Speedwell Volunteer Fire Department station and land be set aside to benefit the Speedwell Fire Department. The department was a building built by the community for the community, and I'm asking that it be returned back to the community through the fire department. With the Speedwell Rootin' Club being a major supporter, the community worked together to build the Speedwell Fire Station. Virgil Boone and John Whalen hauled lumber from the national forests to build the frame to begin their vision. George Childress dug footers by hand, with many friends and family taking turns to make their dream a reality. The footers were filled with concrete from a hand-cranked concrete mixer. Joe Bass, Roger Pickle, and Charlie Stewart spent many hours at the construction site. Congressman Bill Wompler helped secure funds to purchase the first fire truck, a Seagraves apparatus that's still the talk of the station. Howard Hackler and Herman Klein allowed the Seagraves and the second truck to be located on private property while our station was under construction. Shooting matches were organized by Virgil Boone to start funding the department, along with monthly postmaster luncheons that the ladies auxiliary sponsored. The building and land has been assessed at over $100,000. This would make an excellent establishment to start an extrication unit in Speedwell, an extrication unit that would have been very valuable at our recent cave area rescue. In summary, the people of Speedwell initiated, planned, developed, and dedicated this building to the community, and I feel that the community should still see the hard work to continue to benefit our community fire department. Thank you.
Doug Robinson?
Doug Robinson, Speedwell, and I joined the fire department, I don't know what year, but how can you, the town board, take the old firehouse, explain, tell me why? And anybody, there ain't one have a deed to it?
He has a deed to the property of the firehouse, Don't let him.
There's a deed to the property.
Who has the deed?
The deed's titled currently to the fire department. The titled owner of the land is the fire department. I'm working on the deed now to if the fire department-
How come they inherited the old firehouse? The old people, old farmers built it, went back on horse head and brought out logs, his granddaddy and all. And they built the old firehouse, and how can y'all inherit it?
Well, Mr. Robinson, when we reorganize the Speedwell Fire Department, all the property and all the vehicles and everything come into county's possession.
I know that, but I don't think it's right. I know what you're saying, but that wasn't in the deal. The old firehouse didn't have nothing to do with it.
All the property that was-
I know you inherited it, you inherited it when you shut it down, but that was the old Speedwell Volunteer Fire Department, y'all didn't have nothing to do with it.
So what are you asking us-
Old firehouse.
What are you asking us to do with the old firehouse?
Well, y'all got it up for sale.
So what do you want to see done with the firehouse?
Well, where y'all gonna return to us in place of it?
We'll discuss that.
You got four acres down here at the ball field. You wanna give us those four acres for a landing, for a helicopter, and fishing tournament?
We're not gonna make any decisions tonight. All we're hearing tonight is public comments on what y'all have to say and what y'all would like for us to do. We're not gonna make any decisions tonight.
Well, I appreciate it.
All right, Mr. Jimmy Lenkis, next speaker.
As long as you know me, I don't have a whole lot to say except for this Horton Field down here that was gave to the community. I just want to tell y'all, if you sell that Horton Field, y'all killing $2,000 approximately that goes to the fire department every year for my fishing tournament. Because if you sell that field, if somebody buys it, they won't let us use it. That ends 35-year fishing tournament that's been one of our biggest fundraisers. That's my main concern right there. Some says, "Well, you can still have it," but you can't have it, because we have probably 100 people camped out there on that field, the fishing tournament. If they don't have no place to camp, they're not gonna breed their fish, if you understand what I mean. It's, I mean, we make any worse from 1,000, we have made as much as $2,800 on the weekend. I've worked in this department for 45 years. We worked nights and everything else trying to raise money. If you sell that field, you're ruining us. That's $2,000 more that somebody's gonna have to come up with to, you know, give the fire departments for support. We also use it for training and for a landing zone for helicopter. I don't know how much the place will bring, but you gotta figure over the years, what's it gonna do for the community? There's this money that we, that really, well, the county's gonna lose, really, because the county owns the fire department. Any money we make comes back into the fire department, which belongs to the county. I just want y'all to think about this, and we had talked maybe that y'all could see a way fit to keep this deed to the fire department, which is still owned by the county, where we can continue to use it for fundraising, for landing zone, or whatever we need it for. That's my only thing I had to say about it, and I thank you.
Thanks. Mickey Bass?
Thank y'all for letting us come and speak about the old Speedwell Fire Station. I started many months ago. I started when I was 16 years old. I've seen hard work the community did there. And I would like to see it stay with the fire department. Realistic says no, the fire station. But I would like to say, when it is sold, the money go into a fund for the Speedwell Volunteer Fire Department for extrication equipment and extrication truck. We're the only department in the county that does not have extrication equipment, unless you wanna call it a crowbar, and that's what we have. I mean, we could get in with crowbar, but it'd take a long time and everything. So please realize that we need that money to put in extrication equipment and extrication truck. Thank you very much.
Linda Meyer?
Good evening, gentlemen. The first topic would be the vacant lot in Roar Retreat on Route 11. It's pretty close to the elementary school. Could it possibly be used for expansion in the future if we need it? Could the property be leased or rented now instead of the county selling it? So I'd like you to think about that. Concerned about the, after canvassing my neighbors, we're concerned about the Speedwell Firehouse. We have no objection to the sale. However, manpower and private funds from Speedwell residents made it possible. Proceeds from the sale should go into an escrow account for the Speedwell Fire Department for equipment and training. Okay? And then we're talking about the land. Considering that it's in a floodplain and it's adjacent to the transfer station, I would think that the return is marginal. It should be a public-use creek access retained by the county. It's currently maintained by the fire department, and it could and should continue in that life. And then a little bit of levity. Okay, this is my postscript. Perhaps you don't want your legacy to be an environmental catastrophe by the destruction of the habitat of the somewhat amphibious, definitely nocturnal, Speedwell toad that also lives at that property. Thank you, gentlemen.
And the last speaker signed up is Gus Kinsler.
I think everybody's touched on what I wanted to touch on, so it's a good thing about coming last. Don't have a problem with the sale of the fire department. It is set vacant for 10 years, except for the bottom being rented out or taken up by a local business. And so I would like with everyone else to see the money go into an account for the fire department for extrication equipment. Like Mickey said, Speedwell is the only fire department in the county that does not have extrication equipment and is badly needed. Something were to happen in the intersection in Speedwell, you're looking at 20 minutes before extrication can get there. So I think that would be a good idea and would look good on y'all to put this out. Thanks.
That's all that signed up. Mr. Chairman, with your permission, this is the technology age. I had a Facebook tag from Wilma Justice, and I'd like to enter this into the record because the weather is bad, calling for bad weather tonight, so I'm just gonna read it. "If the vacant lot on Route 11 adjoins Roar Retreat Elementary School, wouldn't it be best for the county to keep it for future school expansion? If the county does not plan on any school expansion for now, the BOS Board of Supervisors should consider using, renting the vacant lot until any such need might arise. Possibly the county could make a little cash from renting it on a yearly lease, because that would be long enough for any business venture to relocate, since school expansions would take months of planning and preparation." And that's all the people that have signed up.
Do we have anyone else that would like to speak on the public hearing? Give your name and address, please.
Raimi Thompson. I currently live in Smith County, but I'm getting married and we're moving in. My wife's land joins this vacant lot on Route 11 beside the school. We were just concerned with what kind of restrictions are in the school zone. Is it gonna be to where we have to worry about a trailer park moving in beside of us? You know, personally, we like it empty, but if we're gonna sell it, I wanna know what restrictions is on it. From what I've seen on the Wiss County website, the only thing it said on the school zone was speed limit and a gun within 1,000 feet. From what I can tell, she is in Roar Retreat, Town Roar Retreat. The line is the fence between us and the county. So over here, we couldn't shoot a gun. Over here, we could. I was just, we were just concerned what kind of restrictions was gonna be on this, because with the signs, the flashing school signs, it is a school zone. Thank you.
Anybody else here to speak on the public hearing? Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing. And we'll move right on into the agenda, the night's agenda. We have citizens' time. We have one individual sign up. Citizens' time, Ms. Meyer.
Yes, gentlemen. Looking at your agenda here, I had handed out copies of the resolution from Washington County, and I was wondering if you guys were going to act on that, considering the state of affairs and disease control and all that's going on in the world. It seems like this would be optimum to safeguard the citizens here in Wiss County, so people are not dropped off. I hope you work on it. Okay, then I had also asked you about a resolution. There is a big thing going on at local colleges about diversity, and the resolution that I had suggested before it happens here is to make sure that all restrooms were biologically correct for sanitary facilities, male and female. No X's, no gender neutrals, no baloney. They're either X or Y, and it's all according to biology. Then I wanted to ask you about the deeds. The joint IDA, did you get the deeds back for the properties from the joint IDA?
Yes.
You did. So then I'm assuming that the joint IDA has been acting as a real estate agent for the county if they were holding these deeds. Is that correct?
Ms. Dutton, you want to speak about the deeds? I mean, I don't-
In the year the Joint Industrial Development Authority was created, the board had a public hearing between Town of Roar Retreat, Town of Whiffle, and Wiss County. All properties that were currently owned at that time were fairly loaded by the joint IDA for marketing and industrial development, and that's how that came out.
Okay, and what was, were they getting a percentage of the take from these? Because how did they amass the 400,000-plus when they didn't ask you guys for any resources a while ago? Were they getting a kickback by selling these properties?
The property that was bought by the county, every dollar that was purchased using county taxpayer dollars was returned to the county. Once that property, money was paid back to the county, a long time before I got here. But it, the last piece was paid back to us, '96 or '97. Property sold after that point was retained by the JIDA. What we, this Board of Supervisors did was say, "Okay, you earned this money. It came from sale of land or other things through the county. You use it to fund yourself." They funded themselves over two years now-
Two years.
-with that sale of that property.
Okay. All right, and then I have another question. Do we have any contact or business interests or otherwise with the project in Pulaski to revamp an industrial building? Did we have anything going on with that?
Which industrial building?
I don't know. It was just, it was owned by Pulaski, and Roanoke and a few other communities got together, and they were going to market this and so on. So I was just wondering if Wiss County had, was also in on this deal?
I don't know.
You don't know? Okay, thank you, gentlemen.
Have no other citizens sign up? Citizens' time.
Jim, excuse me?
Jimmy?
Excuse me. As far as the sale on the firehouse building, the way I remember it, I need to look up for the papers, but I understand, the way I understood it, that when we were told about the fire department building, it had a leak in roof, either fix it or something. And that's how I came about it. I just wanted to be sure everybody understood that. We weren't gonna spend any money to fix the roof. So y'all could understand, that's how-
Well, I had been asking about who owned it, because I didn't know what we need to do about insurance, and nobody could ever tell me specifically who needed to carry insurance on that. So we've been carrying insurance.
That's how that got in at least. That may have been wrong on my part, but that's how-
We don't have a problem being sold. We just-
But anyway, that's how it transpired. I'll let Mr. Horni confirm.
Yeah, that's right. Which, I mean, the fire department had talked about it. I mean, we talked about it in the fire department meetings, that if it belonged to the fire department, we had talked about selling it. But I mean, you know, if it belonged to them, they would have sold it, and the money would have stayed in the fire department. And I think the fire department is fine with that as long as the money stays in the community. That's the gist I'm getting from everybody.
In a perfect world, we'd like to keep it in-
And preserve it, isn't it?
It's not a perfect world.
Well, I agree, you have no expectation, but we've talked about that in fire and rescue, and maybe the time is- The public hearing tonight was really not about selling the property, it was whether we should declare a surplus and move home. I think that was the public hearing purpose.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, we'll move on with the agenda for tonight. Next item on the agenda is the minutes of the previous minutes for previous meeting on September the 23rd, 2014. Do I have a motion?
Just leave us. I make a motion, we approve the minutes as presented?
I have a second. Second. Any corrections or changes need to be made to the minutes?
I have a correction. On page 12, it says that I voted, and I wasn't here. Because I left at 11 o'clock, so I think it should probably show that I left at 11 and didn't return.
Okay. Any more corrections or changes to the minutes? Okay, we have a motion to, we have another motion to approve the minutes as corrected?
Yeah, I'll amend my motion and include Gene's correction.
Second. I'll do a roll call vote. Dr. Hausman?
Aye.
The chair votes aye. Next item on the agenda is payment of invoices.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we pay the invoices with the exception of 30089387. That's the rate.
Okay, we'll pull out check number 3008937.
387.
287?
I'll second that.
Where the heck is that going? Okay, is any discussion or any other invoice needs to be discussed, or any board member would like to ask any questions about the rest of the invoices? Hearing none, I'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Horni?
Aye. Aye.
The chair votes aye.
Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion that we approve check number 30089387 to McRoberts Auto for $45.
Do I have a second?
Second.
So you want to have any discussion on this invoice? Hearing none, I'll do a roll call vote. Dr. Hausman?
Aye. Aye. Aye.
The chair votes aye. Motion passes six with one extension. We'll move on into old business. First item on the agenda is friends of the Wiss Canine and WBAWL, which I got an email saying they no longer needed to be on the agenda. So is there any other old business? Mr. Dutton?
Mr. Chairman, I received an email from County Mary and also one from Smith County that the joint resolution that we proposed for the airport commission is fine to be adopted, be presented to everybody, all the other bodies, for us to adopt it without any changes. So at the next meeting, I'd like to present that resolution to the board. That's okay?
That's fine. Any other old business? Hearing none, we'll go into new business. First item on the agenda is Mount Rogers Community Service Board Performance Agreement. Mr. Dutton?
This is the annual contract between, which required between Mount Rogers Community Service Board and Wiss County. It is a long, detailed item, included the start of it, includes the contract summary of how much it's valued. Mount Rogers annually spends, their budget's 39 million plus, and it goes through and dictates all the requirements and disclosures that's needed to be compliant with the law. I request permission from the chairman and county administrator to sign this agreement.
Okay, do we have a motion?
I would make that motion.
Do I have a second? Our motion is second. Need any discussion?
This is just a regular form, but it's just a yearly thing. The only thing to change is just the budget.
Budget numbers and their utilization plan changes a little bit from here.
Any more discussion? Hearing none, I'll do a roll call vote. Dr. Hausman?
Aye. Aye. Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion passes. Next item on the agenda is the Mount Rogers Planning District Commission FY14 Audit. I hope everybody got a chance to look at that. Mount Rogers is doing well. They have an unqualified audit. Is there any questions? Is there any questions? Do we need to accept this, Mr. Dalton?
Mr. Chairman, I'll, I'll move that we accept this financial report.
I'll second that motion.
Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Horni?
Aye.
Aye.
The chair votes aye. Next item on the agenda is the Pepper Ferry Regional Wastewater Treatment Authority. Mr. Dalton, this is agreement.
This is annual agreement that allows service providers in Wood County to take setage down the Pepper Ferry regional plant, the most economical version, to county citizens. We've been, the board's been approving this ten-plus years. There's two parts of it. If we authorize, accepted and authorized signing the memorandum of understanding, we'll get it back over there, too.
Okay, well, I have to have two motions. First motion is to accept the agreement. Do I have a motion?
I'm going to get one.
Have a second.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Horni?
Aye.
Aye.
The chair votes aye. Have a motion to authorize Mr. Dalton to sign the agreement? Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll do a roll call vote. Dr. Hausman?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
The chair votes aye. Next item on the agenda for that is the VDOT revised fiscal year 2015 to 26, 2020, six-year improvement plan. Mr. Dalton, they're going to have a hearing on October the twenty-second at five to six p.m. I will be attending the meeting. Mr. Hale said he was going. Is there any issue you would like to first to know, Mr. Dalton?
If you reviewed the full documents that's on the internet, these links, just about, or a lot of the proposed projects in Wood County have been eliminated on the interstate, safety improvements. We need to speak and allow those to remain. I think our best bet is to ask them to prioritize by traffic counts instead of political process. Safety, safety improvements down the exit eighty-one or eighty-one seventy-seven, which we just proposed.
I know they're taking written comments. Would you mind preparing written comments to send to the, to send?
Okay. Do you need those to take with you in twenty seconds?
Yes, sir. Does anybody have any other comments?
Yeah, I do. The heading here is under six-year plan. Is that also a discussion of secondary system?
No, sir.
Well, let's discuss it a minute anyway.
Okay.
We now have all the right-of-way agreements with Archer Road in place. The rules have changed yet again.
No.
I'd like for you to find out how you shuffle the budget money like it's being shuffled. There either is money in this year's budget, or there isn't money. It can't be both ways. We were told that that job would be done this year. Then it changed till next year. And now, that same magic paper is saying two thousand seventeen. So, how do you get this monkey in a box and tell when it's really maybe going to happen, if ever?
I don't know how you catch that greased monkey, Joe. But my understanding, I think it was a public session, we were having a six-year plan, that if we moved Dunford Road up and you got the agreements in place, that there would be money enough to start that project. Undoubtedly, based on the primary and interstate sections, there's been a reduction in funds. They haven't reported that on the secondary road plan to us, but that's the only thing I can gather from what you've told me that Mr. Russell's explained to you, that we're now, not this year, not next year, but two thousand seventeen.
Could you ask Mr. Russell to come to our day meeting, and maybe he can explain it to us of, if there'd been a reduction in money to the, to the six-year plan?
October twenty-eighth?
Yes, sir.
Well, Mr. Chairman, just for the record, we got that announcement that Wood County had been cut two million dollars by the district. Is that correct? About two months ago, they arbitrarily took two million dollars out of maintenance for Wood County.
Road concern.
Was that road concern? Well, okay. That would have covered the projects we thought were going to happen. So, with this action of getting all the right-of-way agreements in place, that changed that one project from being a three-point-four million dollars at that time, to being what we had been told was about a three-hundred-thousand-dollar project. So, just in my country logic, that took care of their budget problem. But he tells me he can't follow that train of thought. Now, that same three-hundred-thousand-dollar surface job has suddenly become a four-point, four-hundred-sixty-seven-thousand-dollar job. Again, the magic numbers. So, if you would give him a heads-up, maybe he could explain the math to me.
Mark, would you send out the adopted six-year plan by email tomorrow, so everybody can look at it? That has all the numbers on it. Should reflect what was actually approved, because if you remember, we had added some roads to the plan, and he came in and said we couldn't do that.
Yep.
But we did adopt the plan that included all those roads, the ones that've been on the plan in the past.
Let's stay focused on Archer Road for a minute. He first told us we needed a resolution. We got that resolution to him. Is that correct? That we want it put in real wrestling?
Mm-hmm.
Then, we had to have the right-of-way agreements to get it off of that three-million-three-hundred-thousand-dollar list. So, that happened. If the money was ever there, it ought to still be there, and some work ought to happen. We wasted this year, so I guess next year, but certainly not seventeen.
We haven't wasted this year.
What, what is the status of Dunford Road?
I think I would like to know. We've been paving. I think they're today. My understanding, they got all the cross drains and drain pipes in. They had, they had a few problems with a couple of residents, that they put the drain pipes in in the wrong place. They've had to correct those and fix those problems. I think, my understanding, their intent is to let it sit over the winter and next summer, prime and double sit.
Well, that's a good move. Road building-wise, it's much more likely to stay there by letting it go through a free thaw cycle and pave it next year. But you remember, though, that he said if there was money, it would go to Archer Road. That was part of the promise. Now, that, that promise is evaporated to come up with that two thousand seventeen number.
Is he saying Dunford Road costs more than what they?
Oh, yeah. It's, we misrepresented it. It would be any leftover. About forty-five years ago, I took a job that I was going to get a share of the net, but if you don't keep the books, there's never any net. And we're playing with his books. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I feel better. That makes you feel any better.
Thank you, Mr. Hale.
The day meeting, we want an explanation of the cost for Dunford Road, the changes in the budgets, and Reese. That's what he needs addressed.
Yes, sir.
If there was any leftover, it's supposed to go to Archer Road.
Anybody have any other questions on each, either one of the six-year plan?
Just for referencing his legacy, not to.
Did I say Tuesday?
No, he has Tuesday in the, in his letter.
Oh, okay.
But it's Wednesday. I'll go in twenty seconds.
And invite all the board members to come to the meeting if they can. Next, we have a letter from Appalachian Juvenile Commission informing us that they are raising the per diem at the Highlands Attention Center to one, one hundred and seventy-five dollars, and, and the increase will take effect immediately. At this time, I still think we do not have anybody at the facility.
I understand we don't have anybody there, but when there's no beds available in Christiansburg, sometimes we have to take them to.
Do we need to adopt this, or, I mean, do anything?
I think they're just telling you.
It didn't sound like they were answering.
Yeah.
The holiday invite from one hundred to one hundred and seven, seventy-five bucks.
Okay.
Maybe we ought to give them authority to go to two, three hundred, and then, then tell them if we send anybody, then we want them to drop it back.
Okay, moving on with the agenda. We have the VHDA Freedom Lane. Mr. Dalton?
If y'all have any comments concerning the project, I don't know a lot about it, except that maybe this application, it's pretty clear what they're trying to do with the project. Everybody knows where Hitchfield's at.
Do we need to do anything with this? Do we need just information?
If you want to endorse it, I think they get a check mark. If you don't endorse it, they get a check mark.
Yeah, a letter of support or anything doesn't get you anything, but if you say something negative, it subtracts twenty-five points. They're really asking for negative stuff.
I guess you could read that one.
Well, I'll open up the floor for any motions. Hearing none, I'll move on with the agenda. We have the VAECO Annual Business Meeting Voting Credentials. Mr. Dalton, if you got that pulled up, go ahead.
I annually, we have to designate someone to vote at the annual meeting, the alternate in case they're not there. Certainly, we have to certify that vote by the board of supervisors and send it to it into the VAECO by the date they're talking about there, so that you can vote at their annual meeting. I think Mr. Reeves, you're on the board of directors, and will be there. I do not know who else has signed up to go. I think Mr. Hale has.
Has anybody else signed up to go? I will be there, and Mr. Hale will be there.
It'd be nice for somebody to make the motion, make you the voting member and Joe the alternate.
I'll make that motion. Chairman Reeves be the voting member, and Mr. Hale be the alternate.
I have a second.
I second that.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same side.
Mr. Chairman, if I may.
Yes.
Do we need to make a request for that, money on that revenue sharing? You know, we were requesting ten million last year. Not that we don't need it.
Well, we got the ten million. I don't know if we can afford to get any more. Because of the ten million, five of them are yours.
Yeah, yeah, I have a weak temper today. So, that's, that's just sitting out there waiting for projects, right?
Yes. We didn't put anything in this year's budget to do that.
What I'm always asking, that original appropriation from last year is safe.
It is.
It's, it's set. It can't be, this is not a reaffirmation of that ten.
No, sir. And the year before, we did eight hundred and some thousand dollars.
If not, we'll move on with the agenda. Next item on is appointments. We have a, a letter from the Woodland Chamber of Commerce requesting that we appoint David Manley, Executive Director, to join Industrial Authority to the New River Mount Rogers Workforce Investment Board of Wood County.
Mr. Chairman, I'll, I'll make that motion. I know that, you know, Dr. Hawthorne served on that, and so, I make the motion that we appoint Mr. Manley.
I have a second.
Aye.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same side. Motion passes. Mr. Manley is appointed. Other appointments?
Well, on, we have a letter of resignation from, from Mr. Keith St. John, from the Wood County Rescue Squad Board of Directors, so we will need to, you know, interview people for, for that position, and we also need to interview people for a position with Lead Mines Rescue Squad Board of Directors. Monday, this coming Monday, we have another fire rescue meeting at eight o'clock, and I would request that committee members bring some, you know, some names, so that we can, I can discuss them and get some, some interviews set up, so that we can fill these, these two positions.
And I'd like to request, if any board member has names that they would like to submit, also email them to myself or Mr. Dalton. Other appointments?
There was actually two of them on the Workforce Investment Board, in addition to Mr. Manley. I've asked Mr. Jeff Dunnick, the plant manager from Summit America, if he would do it, and he has agreed that this board will let him.
So moved.
I have a second.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same side. He is appointed. Did we have two, or just have one?
There's another one, I think, still at Bacon, isn't there, Steve?
I think that was two. We got both of them covered there.
Okay, that's good.
Yeah, I'm off the hot seat now. Jeff Dunnick, D-U-N-N-A-C-K, plant manager at Summit America.
Mr. Chairman, we do have another appointment, that Mr. Farthing is on this, represents us on the Woodland Chamber of Commerce Board. His term expires December thirty-first, I believe. Right. The Woodland has requested a nomination from the board, Wood County Board of Supervisors, for somebody to settle. for somebody to settle the next three-year term, I believe it is. I understand Mr. Artie Hall would like to do that.
I won't nominate myself, but I will, I'll abstain from.
Well, I'll open the floor for nominations.
Well, I'll nominate you.
I'll second. We'll have a nomination in a second. Appoint Mr. Hall. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
And the way that Artie is, that there is still a, that goes to the nomination committee. You will be our representative on the elect, they have, at their annual meeting, they will have an election, and, and those will be confirmed at the annual meeting, I understand.
Right.
Mr. Farthing.
Just tell Jennifer to send me the stuff. I'll show up for me. I've been on the board before, so you gotta get out there and campaign.
I don't think that was gonna be hard.
The board or Mr. Dalton's any other appointments that we need to be considered at this time? Here and now, we'll move on, and I'm not gonna read this letter from Sheriff. If I see he's here, I'm gonna let him come up and, and speak.
I thought you were just gonna throw it in the trash. Tell him you can't design.
I've heard that suggestion today. And I think, Mr. Chairman, I'd like for everybody to note that I came up here today with, or tonight, with a leg brace on this knee and an elbow brace on this arm.
You're just falling apart.
I am, yes. One piece at a time. I came here as a deputy sheriff in nineteen eighty-three. I've been over half my life serving as a member of the With County Sheriff's Office. Been on twenty-four-seven calls since nineteen ninety-three. So I believe that's twenty-one years, being on twenty-four-seven call. People of With County deserve to have somebody as a sheriff that's going to be there when they're needed. And I'm getting to the age, and the things I want to do while I still have a few good years left in me to where I am going to announce my retirement, which I've previously done. It's not an easy decision, thought long and hard on it, but despite what sheriffs do in other parts of the state, I'm not gonna be retired on duty. If I can't serve at my full capacity, which is twenty-four-seven, I'm not gonna take the money for it. The years I have then, I can retire. I'm already into social security age. Hopefully, I'll have enough years in me to do a lot of the things that I plan to do. But I am moving on into retirement. My last day here will be the thirty-first of December. Our first day of retirement will be January first of two thousand fifteen. When I look around the board here, the only people that can remember me as a young man are Coy and possibly Dr. Housen.
But he teach you.
Possibly.
But I was a young man, too.
Indeed. Indeed, and you retired before I did.
Yeah, early, early.
Well, I could have, by statute, retired a number of years ago, but I felt that I had it in me. I've reached a point where I just don't have it in me any longer for twenty-four-seven duty. Haven't been able to travel. I plan to travel. Joe's been trying to set me up with a guy out in Wyoming, but I couldn't get ahold of him, so I got ahold of another one, and I'm gonna be doing some of the things that I've always wanted to do. And I plan to spend more time with my family. So I'll be moving on.
Well, on behalf of the Board of Supervisors and the citizens of With County, well, thank you for your service to With County.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
It's been an honor to know you and work.
Not gone yet.
Hey, y'all, we're gonna just.
He's trying to say, you walk out that door, don't ever come back.
I'll be back.
Don't tell him that.
It's been a pleasure over the years, Doug. It has.
Thank you.
You've done a valued service to the community here in With County.
Thank you. I hope I have. Hope that's my legacy.
There's still plenty of fish in New River.
Well, I plan on working on those, 'cause I've only been fishing one time in the last four years. I plan to be fishing maybe four times a week.
Mr. Hale said if you ever want to pick up trash anywhere.
Bending over, after I broke my back, bending over is no longer. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Sheriff's such a winner. He and I bet a long time ago who would retire first, and I lose again.
Yeah, we've been trying to outlast each other, so, thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Do we need to do anything with this, Mr. Dalton, tonight?
Well, he submitted to the board for notice. It's gone to the court, and I understand the next step is that at some point in time, the chief deputy by code section will take office on January the first, or recently, and prior to January fourth, where he can step into office. And, well, over, uh, January first.
Okay. Okay, the next item on the agenda is Resolution of, let me find it here, Resolution twenty-fourteen dash nineteen, Arnie Centennial of the Smith-Leaver Act Establishing Cooperative Extension. And I'll read the resolution. Whereas the Smith-Leaver Act of nineteen fourteen established the Cooperative Extension Service, a state-by-state national network of extension educators who extended the university's base research and knowledge to the people in the counties. And whereas the cooperative extension system is a nationwide educational network that is a collaboration of federal, state, and local governments, and Virginia Tech and the Virginia State University, the state land-grant universities, and whereas the mission of the cooperative extension system is disseminate research-based information on topics that vary from nutrition and health, youth development, agriculture, agriculture, animal husbandry, small business, and professional finance. Every U.S. state and territory has a central state extension office at its land-grant universities and county offices staffed by professionals. And whereas cooperative extension of With County serves its residents through faculty and staff providing educational programs and research to meet the needs of the county. And whereas, for one hundred years, the Smith-Leaver Act has supplemented innovative research and vital educational programs for youth and adults to progressive information delivery systems that improve lives and shape a nation. And whereas Virginia Cooperative Extension Educational Programs in the area of family and consumer service science, sciences, agriculture and natural resources, four-H youth, four-H youth development, and community liabilities have benefited from the continued financial support from the government bodies of With County. And With County has a proud and distinguished, I can't see, Texas, proud and distinguished reputation of a strong extension program. Therefore, be it proclaimed by the Board of Supervisors of With County, of the county of With, that the board, on behalf of the citizens of With County, recognized the one-hundredth anniversary of the Smith-Leaver Act that established cooperative extension. We honor those who have served and have served residents of all ages and backgrounds that, and that the residents continue to grow in awareness and support and reap the benefits of the program and services provided by the Virginia Cooperative Extension, Extension of With County. Therefore, be it resolved that this resolution be adopted by the With County Board of Supervisors on this fourteenth day of October twenty fourteen. I have a motion to approve the resolution.
Mr. Chairman, I like a motion to pass the chair.
Now, a second.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Resolution passes. Okay, next thing on the, on the agenda is from the Commonwealth Attorney, Commonwealth of Virginia Audit of Public Accounts. Mr. Dalton?
You have a letter that the Audit of Public Accounts came and reviewed the Treasury Commissioner of Rivers, Sheriff, Commonwealth Attorney's Office, and found that their offices were, I guess, in excellent shape, and they've met all the guidelines required by law, and they were reporting such. The board needs to accept that letter.
I have a motion to accept the letter.
Make a motion, we accept the letter.
Second.
I'll second.
All in favors, or any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, moving on with the agenda. We have other. Is any board member, or Mr. Dalton, do you have any other new business?
Yes.
Okay, anybody on the board have any new business? Here and now, next item on the agenda is closed meeting under Virginia Code two-point-two dash thirty-seven, one-one, point A, dot seven, legal counsel, and two-point-two dash thirty-seven, one-one, dot A, dot one personnel. I have a motion.
Second.
To have a second.
Second.
I'll do a roll call vote. Dr. Housen?
Aye.
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 The chair votes aye. We are now in closed session. Favor coming out of the closed session, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. We ratify closed session.
Whereas the With County Board of Supervisors has convened a closed meeting on this date pursuant to an affirmative recorded vote and in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, and whereas Section two-point-two dash three-seven-one-two of the Code of Virginia requires a certification by the With County Board of Supervisors, that such a meeting was conducted in accordance with Virginia law. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the With County Board of Supervisors hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law were discussed in the closed meeting to which this certification resolution applies, and only such public business matters, as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting, were heard, discussed, or considered by the With County Board of Supervisors.
Now, a second.
Second.
I'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Horny?
Aye.
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 The chair votes aye. Is there any motions?
I make a motion that we authorize the county attorney to draft an amendment to an employment contract.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Here and now, I'll do a roll call vote. Dr. Housen?
Aye.
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 The chair votes aye. Mr. Dalton, is there any other business bring for the board tonight? Any board member have anything? If not, we'll recess until five-thirty tomorrow afternoon. I was back to order. Hey, Mr. Dalton, you want to give us a report on the Bearin Springs?
We will. We're gonna tag team you. Mr. Vaughn's gonna start us off, and I'll pitch in as we go along. He took all the notes.
Okay, well, unfortunately, we left without the roster of people, but let's just say they had their lawyer there, they had their finance person there. Who else was there? Brian from O D W was there.
The director was Ray Witt, the interim director of Harrington. John Hallback, who is the state drinking water director. Robert Payne, their attorney or counsel. They had Brian Blankenship, who is the, over the regional, I guess, Grant, the maintenance, and Eric Harold, with, who is the district engineer, I guess, is title.
Yeah, Brian and Eric are the two I deal with most frequently. Projects, planning, views, effects, and that finance, sending in things. Basically, we sat down with Mr. Dalton, myself, and the county attorney, and started off mostly listening to what they were telling us. I got the impression that they feel our pain to a point. I mean, they understand the purpose is to give people water, water. But we came up with three things that we need to do. We need to change Order One, and this goes to the construction to permit. We're gonna basically purge all the documents of any references to the existing Bearin Springs community system. The line item in there, we had fifty thousand dollars in the project to do what if, any of the specifications, references to inch water line barrels, anything that had to do. And that's what's in the change order. That was Mr. Boarts. We called him about eleven o'clock on the cell phone to say, we need all that stuff purged so we can get a change order in. Since we've already basically got a contractor on board, what we'll have to do is insert that in as a contract change at the very beginning when signatures are made, which we've done that before. I noticed that on a couple of the projects. If we do it as an added bid, then we have to go out and rebid the project. We don't wanna do that. So we're gonna stick with the contractor we got and just delete work from the project, but we're also gonna add time to the project. You'll notice that in the draft document. We're gonna give them some time. One of the benefits of adding time was we explained the rural development portion, which will go from Poplar Camp up to Foster Falls Road, tie into this system, that the schedule for that is pretty aggressive. We're designing it into two pieces for a ward, phase two, phase three, includes the water tank. And if all things are equal, the extension and then weather delays that, you know, you'll have in the winter, these two projects would potentially finish at approximately the same time. So adding the time is just fair to the contractor. He's given us three months' extension on his bid. We've asked him to give us till the fifteenth of November, and we think he's gonna do that. So we've basically got thirty days to that point to get these things worked out. So as far as sequencing, getting potable water to the Bearin Springs system, which they were concerned about, they don't wanna have a water system to nowhere, essentially with nothing to hook up. We guaranteed them. The engineer, Mr. Boarts, got a verbal today from R D, that the project's gonna go. It's been approved. So I got an email from him on that, so we'll get that in writing. So Change Order One is one of the steps we've gotta do today to go ahead and take care of those problems that deal with the potentially previous, we might use something with the water. And the whole point of that, as you well well and remember, was maybe we could get people water up there twelve months earlier as the Castleton Road project progressed. Well, because of all the delays, that's another point now for the two projects are gonna finish at essentially the same time. So it doesn't even play. But we've gotta clean up the contract documents to reflect that. The second thing is the assurances for use, the user agreement and all that. I came back, I found all the files, found all the user agreements, put that in a letter, and I just sent it off in the email, and it's sitting out there going to distribution tomorrow morning. They wanted to have assurances that we had enough people using the system, so all the user agreements, we had people say, yes, I agree, I'll sign on, I'll buy the water. Came back, compiled all that data, and that was a requirement from a June letter from Mr. Palay, it's the funding people. And then from Mr. Kitchen at the Lexington office, also gave more specificity to the requirement. He wanted a sample, one of the user agreements as a sample, and then certification of how many we accuracy that. many we actually said we'd sign onto the system. So I gave him those in the letter, I have a copy of that if you wanna look at it and pass it around. That was the second requirement, so we've basically checked that block, hey, we took care of that today. Mr. Borts is taking care of the first block. The third block, a little more sticky, Mr. Dalton might press this. They think that they might have trouble with potentially us essentially competing with an existing water system. I can tell by looking your face that what water system? I mean, it only exists by, because it's a permitted system right now, essentially. I mean, it's dysfunctional as it is.
They're, excuse me, they're talking about the Bearin Springs water system?
Yes, they are. They're so, they're potentially, think the project might get turned down because of some regulations. They gotta check with EPA, I think they said, people who run the Safe Drinking Water Act program. They've had a court case up in Northern Virginia, I believe you said?
Taswell.
Taswell, of a system coming in and competing with an existing public system. So technically, it is, since it's a community system, it is a public water system, and it has a program, such as it is.
They had water last night, I'm sure, Gary. About 3:00 AM.
The implication of that is the county attorney is gonna have to review the ordinance for the mandatory connection and see how those those things interact with each other. Because of the mandatory connection, the way I understood it, we would be forcing a takeover of an existing water system. As strange as that seems, because of what's going on.
I mean, can't we get something from all of them people on that system saying, we wanna hook up to your system?
We do. That's the user agreements that I just just mentioned.
And all of them is signed, I mean, if we done this and exempted that area out of the mandatory hookups, you can't do that.
Right now, as of March of 13, we had 72 yeses and 17 noes and about 36 didn't respond. That's a copy of the letter, a email off just five minutes ago.
So when they're talking about user agreements, they're actually talking about people who will use the water, not just pay the minimum bill?
Yeah, they wanna see in the in the letter, and I don't know how it ended up, it just happens to match the number we've got. I guess our engineers have shared this information that we had a sign up, and they included that in that letter, so.
I come up with 125 because of the 36 and the other potential.
But the state law allows counties, PSAs to pass a mandatory connection ordinance that you've gotta pay a minimum bill whether you use the water or not, or a frontage fee. We use the we use the minimum bill because we don't wanna gene horny if we ran water by him, he'd be paying 50 times the amount because of his frontage on the roads as the guy, and he's only got one house, too. So there, I think Mr. Payne was questioning whether that was an enforceable ordinance. And Scott is to write a letter to them with his opinion.
Okay, an enforceable ordinance that says that they have to pay the minimum. I thought that we had established that earlier, that that was that those mandatory services were were okay by state law.
We have.
Okay.
So item one, change order's in front of you, should be handled, subject, and we're gonna have some language, we'll send it back, subject to funding, et cetera. But that's pretty much handled. Engineer jumped right on that. Item two, I got, you got that right there. So item three is gonna be a little stickler.
Yeah. Actually, the local guys and the guy, Mr. Blankenship, I think had a pretty positive, yeah, you do this and we can move forward. The state director, whatever his title is, was a little more pragmatic that you've got these two issues that I have to approve. And what we've got today, number one is this change order that we'd asked to be approved contingent upon the Virginia Department of Health approval and funding. The bill is, will have the letter for the connections that, and that's the number they required in that letter, 72. And Scott will address the mandatory connection ordinance in a letter, hopefully this week. And we hope that turns out positive, and maybe it will.
One of the things the budget people talked about was the funding that they get for this program comes down from federal EPA. He has a meeting within the next week, a couple of weeks coming up. And the federal program has changed from three years to two years the amount of time that money has to be spent once they give it to the state to use. So he's got, he's got an obligation, EPA does. The state now has money on their books that they have to move out in two years. Do the math, the next 30 days in that process is critical, because by that time, we could award project, construct the project, finish up the project, 24 months starting on October. So I think he was kinda leaning, you could get the impression he's kinda leaning that he's, if we can't move things out, we're ready to go, we're ready for, you know, we're shovel ready with this change order one. But, you know, he's kind of implying that when he might go to another project because of the two-year window. I got that impression. We're trying to stop that. I think we're there. So the legal piece, the third, the third component here, that'll be, if that eats up the next 25 days, I don't know.
Yeah, our point was that we'd started Jackson School. We actually, Bearin Springs was actually ahead of Jackson School. We got our letters from Health Department basically the same time. We bid both within 30 days of each other. The Board of Supervisors approved the, accepted the bids within the same timeframe. The information went to the state director at the same time. He approved moving forth with Jackson, but not Bearin Springs because of the red flag that went up about the construction permit.
So we essentially met our 12-month window. It was in the requirements of all the previous attempt to fund other, for lack of a better term. And then it pretty much, as far as I like, it's been held up by the Commonwealth. So I wouldn't wanna play that card that we missed our 12-month window, but he was implying that also.
Have we ever had a loan from VDH before for water?
Yes, I think so. Smaller ones. Our presentation today included how many projects we've done and never failed to comply with the letter of conditions, millions and millions and dozens and dozens from DEQ. And we took both projects simultaneously or concurrent to the same point. And when it got to their office.
One continued, one didn't.
Of the three requirements, the first one is pretty easy to to deal with.
Mm-hmm.
And we have apparently an understanding contractor out there.
Mm-hmm.
The third one is just something that they've got to, they've got to find out the legality of it, about the competing water systems. That's not anything that that we have a hand in, is it?
Don't think so.
I mean, so that's completely out of our hands. That's them.
So if they come back and say, we can't compete with Riddle, the water system, didn't want, is there?
The loan is gone.
And then what are the option for the people of the Riddle water system? Do we?
Well, this is the option. We can, actually, they threw this out at us, they, in a manner of speaking, that we could fund it ourselves or go ask RD for the additional money to do it.
So the competing water systems then is just the Department of Health? They're the only ones that have that?
Mr. Riddle is a permitted system by the Commonwealth, and we would be a permitted system, and therefore, two permitted, two permitted systems would be competing with each other.
But that's not any kind of stipulation with rural development? That's only a stipulation with Virginia Department of Health? That's. Did anybody mention non-compliant license fee?
We did talk about that, Joe. I mean.
I even mentioned that, and Scott's looking into it, Mr. Farthing, that there would be, what's the problem if the very day that we put the system in operation, they terminate his permit? Then we don't have competing systems. So he was looking into that little, and you mentioned that happens with the sewer systems has happened, similar thing. Sewer permits for places.
Well, I don't understand why they haven't terminated terminated this permit already. I mean.
Yeah, if the permit was gone, there wouldn't be two competing permits, would it? And then you'd probably have one more fine point because they could sign him for operating the system, use that in quotes, without a permit. So they have things they can do.
Can and do.
Yes, sir.
The the second condition concerns me. Again, is that just for for Department of Health loans? When he says that he's not sure you can require a minimum payment? Isn't that what we heard you, or, excuse me, isn't that what I heard you all say? That he is concerned that he's not sure that that is enforceable?
Mandatory connection. Mandatory connection.
Okay, a mandatory connection, I understand, we've taken out the mandatory hookup fee for this project, but we still are going to require a minimum payment. Does that constitute mandatory hookup? I mean, that's what he's saying.
Our opinion, that that's meeting all the conditions. His opinion, I think, differs from our opinion.
And what you just described also goes into the financials for making the project paper itself.
Okay, I understand that, and, but again, is he saying that just for Department of Health loan, or is he saying that?
He's just speaking to his loan. But I find it interesting that there is no concern about that at Jackson School.
Remember, one of the drivers for Jackson School was the health of the children because of the high sodium levels.
See, and one of the things we talked about, Jackson School actually has a ID number, too. It's a permitted source, but they don't have any concern about competing.
Well, yeah, my concern is if they say that in their opinion that we cannot require a minimum monthly payment, even if it's just for that loan, if they make that statement publicly, that's going to cause us a lot of, a lot of problems.
Well, I think that was part of Mr. Farthing's charge, is in our opinion, from the county, his, our county attorney's opinion of, is it, is the ordinance enforceable and, or not? But I guess going back to the whole thing here, the change order and the information bills prepared with the people that have actually signed and said they wanted public water takes away their concern for the construction permit. The construction permit's five years. If the red flag was brought up about the system based off the construction permit letter, and that goes away, where's the next red flag except Mr. Farthing responding positively that our ordinance was enacted properly and is consistent with state code and the Dill If we can't say that, we're probably bigger problems.
I, I agree.
Also, if we can't build the Bearin Springs Division One piece, what we're talking about, based on the financials that were reworked by Pete and Borts, that changes the total number, go to the users for that whole project from 248 down to 132, which affects the overall operation condition of the entire water system. So RD would also have, they would look at that, too, that affects the overall system.
But I think at this point, we'd recommend that you guys approve change order number one to their, to the contract and submit it to the Health Department with everybody's signatures contingent upon the Health Department approval and proceeding closing of the loan.
Right, and that way, we can do a notice of award to the contractor, who's been holding his bids since June. He could've walked a long time ago, and we'd be rebidding this thing.
Well, I entertain the motion to approve change order one.
I might add that.
They have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion?
Mr. Hausman, would you include a statement contingent upon closing of the Health Department loan?
Yes, I, yeah, I'd like to add that to the motion.
Any more discussion? Bill roll call vote, Dr. Hausman?
Aye.
Aye.
Yeah?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Resolution passes.
Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, Bill.
Second item we have is the Board of Supervisors, based off our recommendations, have been appropriating money on a quarterly basis. The Water Department had a annual payment for joint services. We appropriated half of it, or you guys had, they need the remaining 279,838 appropriated. And they also have an annual payment to, for a bond of 145,350. It's really 200 and some thousand dollars, but they need 145,350 to make those payments without being over budget. So we'd asked that those, it's budgeted, but not appropriated at this point in time.
Can we give that all in one motion?
Yes.
I'll make a motion that we appropriate 279,838 to the water line 47001 budget and 145,350 to the Water Department line code 49128.
They have a second. Second. Any discussion?
Does that money come from Water Department reserves and doesn't come out of general fund?
Yes.
Okay. Any more discussion? Hearing none? Mr. Horny?
Aye.
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 Chair votes aye. Motion passes. Mr. Dalton, is anything else we need to discuss? Any board member have anything?
What's the contract amount on the, the segment at Bearin Springs? I know you got a water tank in, but what's, what's the contract bill?
It's approximately 900,000 dollars.
That includes Castleton Road?
No, just Bearin Springs Division One. Castleton Road is about 3.5 million. So it's about a 4.4, 5 million. Current original contract price, 935,850. And this change order, if you just approved, will be ducked out down by 74,900 for a total now of 860,900.
For the Division One?
Yes, sir. And the bids were already a couple hundred thousand below the next lowest.
And the bids were already a couple hundred thousand below the next lowest level before we did this.
Thanks, Ian.
Y'all were at the meeting. I hope they were honest enough, you could read body language. Are you saying if, if these hoops don't work, that we're just going to abandon both projects?
If these hoops don't work, we, we will come to you with a recommendation of, give you your alternatives and let you make that choice.
Okay, but we do have a Plan B rather than just quit?
We will have a Plan B.
Okay.
I don't know what Plan B is at this point in time. At this point in time, I would not want to give up on Plan A.
Anything else? I'm, I'm clear, so adjourned.